Act required notice has been provided for this meeting.
Thank you. On to the approval of minutes.
Move to approve?
Seconded.
It's been motioned and seconded. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Other new business?
We have for you this evening a public hearing item that is also a quasi judicial matter, and it's got two components to it. The first component is a request for a change in zoning district classification from A1 to R1, and the second component is request for approval of a preliminary plat on a 9.82 acre tract of land that's located on the north side of Cedar Ridge Drive between the Grand Prairie Edition and the Briargate and south of the Salina Municipal Golf Course. So, the area that you see shaded in blue there is the subject of applications 3.1A and 3.1B, and with your permission, Mr. Chair, we would move forward with the zoning report.
Sounds good.
So, the application, John, if you can go to the colored zoning map, this shows the zoning existing and surrounding. So, this is the parcel in question. Because it's unplatted and was outside the city limits until 2003, it has retained agricultural zoning as a holding zone. This is the Salina Municipal Golf Course. All of the golf course and the East Crawford Recreation Area is zoned agricultural. And this is the Grand Prairie Edition, which is zoned R1, single family. This is the Cedar Ridge Edition, which is zoned R, single family. And then, we have Valley View Edition here in Valley View Estates, which is here. This is Briargate in Florida Soul, which was done as a planned development district. One thing that we don't, we're not sure that we've done a good job of as a staff was just try to explain that this entire area, essentially between the golf course and what was Cloud Street, and from Marymount over to Markley, except for lease on the north side of Cloud, was all under the ownership of the Graves Family. In 1988, they presented a master plan to the city and to the county, and essentially their master plan called for the closure and elimination of Cloud Street next to the Elks Club Golf Course and construction of a new realigned collector's street that would connect Marymount Road and Markley Road with development occurring north and south of the new street. So, this Cloud Street formerly went through here and connected down to Marymount. That was eliminated, and a new street was constructed through that area. And the development occurred in phases, and we've outlined that in your report, that the first area to develop was what is today the Mariposa Edition, which is along Marymount Road. Then, the second area to develop was this Briargate, Florida Soul area. That was done in the year 2000. Then, in 2003, with active involvement from Lee Hayworth Construction Company, Bob Hayworth, the Cedar Ridge Edition was platted, and at that time Cedar Ridge Drive was completed. So, this section here was called Cloud Street. The end over here was called Mariposa Drive, and in the process, Mariposa Drive was eliminated, Cloud Street was eliminated, and this became Cedar Ridge Drive. The fourth phase occurred in 2008, 2009, with the plating of the Grand Prairie Edition, which again was originally Graves Trust property. In 2006, Lee Hayworth Construction Company, Inc., who developed the Cedar Ridge Edition on the south side of Cedar Ridge Drive, purchased this tract from the Graves Family Trust. And except for Block 5, which is right next to the Mariposa Edition, this is the only remaining piece of that Mariposa master plan area that's still underdeveloped. And so, Mr. Hayworth has filed this application for your consideration to rezone the property from agricultural to R1, single-family residential, to develop it with single-family homes. Total of 22 new homes are proposed, all for single-family construction. As we noted, this property was annexed into the city in 2003, but retained its agricultural zoning. So, this afternoon, your role is to look at whether adequate infrastructure is in place to support development of this property, and whether R1 zoning would be compatible with the zoning and uses of nearby property. We provided for you on pages three and four of your report a summary of the R1 development standards. No deviations or variations are being requested. If you've driven the area, the applicant believes that this property is uniquely suited for development of single-family homes due to its location, its topography, its frontage on an improved street, and access to public utilities. And if you've noted, this has a little more flat terrain than some of the other Mariposa areas. And just as with the Grand Prairie Edition, a portion of this area, south of Cedar Ridge Drive, in this site, the drainage all flows west towards the Mariposa Detention Pond and the Smoky Hill River. And so, based on the physical characteristics of the site, its proximity to the golf course, its frontage on Cedar Ridge Drive, and its proximity to public water and sewer, Mr. Hayworth believes this property is suitable for single-family zoning and development. We took note of the fact that this property has frontage on a public street that has been improved to city street standards. That is true for about 2/3rds of the subdivision, and we'll get into that more with the plat. But essentially, if you look at this, this is infill development between Grand Prairie here, Briargate, Florida Soul here, and Cedar Ridge here. So, it is infilling that area in between. As you can see, except for the golf course on the north, this property abuts existing residential development on all sides. There is a town home development directly to the east, which is Florida Soul. But except for that, this corridor is lined with single-family residential subdivisions, and Mr. Hayworth believes this would be a logical extension of that existing development pattern on Cedar Ridge Drive, and that his request would be compatible with his surroundings. As we noted, the golf course is zoned agricultural. We showed you the zoning on the surrounding tracks. The primary distinction between why we have an R and an R1 district, the R has slightly larger minimum lot sizes and a greater front yard setback. And we generally, it's been left to the choice to the developer whether they prefer that larger 30-foot setback or the 25-foot setback, whether they want to be limited to having the larger lots. But Mr. Hayworth has requested R1 zoning for this property. As far as this property and its relationship to its surroundings, when Florida Soul was developed, public sewer and water lines were stubbed through to the west property line. So, there is water and sewer that's been stubbed through right to this point, and the water supply will come from a water line in Cedar Ridge Drive and a connection over here to Florida Soul. So, there will be a looped connection with two sources of flow. And then, there will be a connection to the existing sewer line in Florida Soul right here, and that the sewer line goes over to a sewer line in Markley Road. As far as storm drainage, we'll get into that in more detail with the plat. But the runoff from this site currently goes across the golf course to the Mariposa Detention Pond. I would call your attention to this right here. This is storm sewer inlets, and there's an outlet. This collects water from the street in this area here, and the water is discharged here and goes across in that general direction. We will talk about that more in detail with the plat. We have fire department response from Station 4 at Marymount and Crawford. Police protections available. This is in the Metalark, Lakewood, and Central Enrollment Area. It is in a neighborhood park service area and would be subject to a park service fee. There are no identified neighborhood parks within this area. The East Crawford Recreation Area, although it's not a neighborhood park, does serve as the source for recreation in this area. Cedar Ridge Drive is classified as a collector's street and has been improved to city standards adjacent to the western frontage of this subdivision, but not the eastern frontage. And you can kind of see at this curve transition, this is the new street which transitions into the old Cloud Street about right in here. So, we have a portion here on the unimproved Cloud Street and a portion here in the brand-new Cedar Ridge Drive. The comprehensive plan shows this as a future suburban residential land use area, and the identified density for suburban residential is 2 to 5 units per acre. Mr. Hayworth's proposed density is 2.3 housing units per acre of land. For comparison, if you look to the west, the Grand Prairie Edition is 1.88 housing units per acre. If you look to the east, the Briargate is 2.6 housing units per acre. So, if you look on the photo, the density is a little bit greater in Briargate than some of these surrounding areas that have larger lots. We have provided for you on page eight and nine some possible findings that the location and physical attributes of this property and availability of utilities make it suitable for urban density residential development. This would be a logical extension of the existing development pattern along Cedar Ridge Drive. Needed utilities can be extended to serve the site, and making this an R1 zone property would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So, we have provided four alternatives on page nine of your report. You could recommend approval of the zoning change, subject to satisfactory plating of the property. You could recommend approval of a lesser change to R1, or to R instead of R1. You could recommend that consideration of this application be postponed to allow the applicant or staff to provide additional information, or to allow unresolved items related to the preliminary plat design to be resolved prior to consideration of this rezoning request. And you could recommend denial of this application, provided appropriate findings are made. I guess as it relates to option three, if the planning commission would like to defer making a motion and recommendation on item 3.1A until we've gone through the report for 3.1B on the plat, and you've been allowed to ask all the questions you like, that is an option. So, one choice would be to move ahead and make a recommendation separately on the zoning request. The other option would be to defer making any kind of motion or recommendation until you've heard and had a chance to ask all your questions about the plat. So, that would be up to the preference of the commissioners.
Any thoughts?
With it being located where it is, I mean, it's just, it seems natural that it would be next.
So, step one would be to get it rezoned?
Yeah. So, if you would feel comfortable making a recommendation on the zoning request, our recommendation was option one, which was to recommend approval of the request to rezone this to R1, single-family residential, subject to satisfactory plating of the property.
Is the applicant present?
You want to?
Anything you'd like to add for us, or?
Okay. This is a public hearing item as well, so we'd want to see if any other members of the public had comments or questions on the zoning.
Anyone from the public like to make a comment?
Mark Kobel, 2144 Columbine Terrace. I would just ask that the information on the plating be considered before you vote on the zoning. I represent the Mariposa homeowners where this water, the water currently, in its current state, flows down, and I represent the homeowners who are concerned that this may possibly increase both the flow and the velocity of water coming in to our detention pond, one that's already taxed very heavily with the flows coming off the golf course.
I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Mark Kobel.
Mr. Kobel, did you read the engineer's report on the?
I have not. I have not.
I am very concerned, too, about the flow through the golf course. But the city engineer says that the detention pond would adequately contain a 25-year rain event.
The detention pond, our detention pond?
No, the detention pond at the proposed development.
Yes, and my concern is not that, my concern's where the water ends up. That detention pond is going to detain that water temporarily, but eventually, it's going to run downhill. And that's where it's going to go to the golf course, and then eventually to our detention pond.
And then eventually?
And our detention pond, I've got videos showing, at the current state, we've got videos from last summer showing that thing being full. It's loaded up after rain. So, my concern is what happens if we've got all this water, even though it's being detained in this pond, it's still got to go somewhere after it goes out of that pond. It's not retained, it's detained. So, it's just a temporary basis for that water. And again, I'm not opposed to Mr. Hayworth being able to develop his land. I just need to be comfortable, and I think you guys need to be comfortable, with what the end result of this development could be, and are we planning to make sure that the water coming off of this development is actually going to be safe for where it ends up eventually?
So, I believe based on those comments, it would be prudent to hold off making any recommendation on the zoning aspect of this to see, let us get into the plat and to the details of that. We have our city engineer, we have Chris Cotton from Parks and Recreation, we have the applicant's engineers. We will get into that in a little more detail. So, I guess staff's recommendation would be for us to get into the plat, and then we get more into the details so that Mr. Kobel can ask questions about the property in more detail, because we do have more detail on the drainage and the plat aspect of this. So, with the chair's permission, I'll go ahead and present the preliminary plat report, and then we'll take additional questions relating to that.
Do we need a motion for that?
We do not need a motion for that. We'll just go on to 3B, and then we'll see where the planning commission's comfort level is when we're done discussing the plat. So, John, what I need you to do is go to the original Mariposa master plan. Just for the commission's overview and benefit, and maybe a little bit for Mr. Kobel's benefit, there's pluses and there's minuses to master planning 140 acres. The plus is that Mr. Graves hired engineers, and they master planned this whole area as to how it could develop. So, this is a proposed town home area. It's still not developed, but it is part of Mariposa. So, this, anybody who owns this is just as much a part of the Mariposa Homeowners Association as these owners here. This used to be part of Mariposa, but Mr. Hayworth purchased that, decided he didn't want to build townhomes, and did the Cedar Ridge Edition, which is all single-family here. This was a town home area over here, and that was split, and one developer did Florida Soul on the north and Briargate on the south. This is the Grand Prairie layout there, and this is the property we're talking about today. When the original drainage study was done for this 136 acres, there was a plan to build two ponds with dams, one here, the lower pond, and one up here that was going to be in Grand Prairie, which was then owned by the Graves Trust. So, there was two detention ponds proposed. There was no detention pond proposed up here. It was just this, upper, and lower. John, I need you to go to the map that shows the drainage basin. So, if you recall, at the previous meeting, we said we'd get into this in more detail. Everything inside that area in blue goes into the pond down here, which is the Mariposa Detention Pond. And for better or worse, that is how Mr. Graves designed it, because this is the low end of the system, and this was designed to be the lower pond with upper detention up here. So, you can see a good portion of the golf course, part of Grand Prairie. This is Mr. Hayworth's property here, and this is property that's even south of Cedar Ridge Drive that all drains into that area. So, there's about 136 acres. John, if you could go to the sheet that has the percentage calculations. Right there. Okay, so, we may have to go down, adjust this a little bit. So, what was done back in 2009 was, we looked, the city staff looked at the entire drainage basin, this whole 136 to 140 acres, and calculations were made of how many cubic feet of runoff were going into the detention pond from these areas. So, you can see that this is the amount coming off the golf course, which is essentially undeveloped property, but has the majority of the property, and that is going into the detention pond. This is the runoff coming from Cornerstone Development. This is the runoff coming from Mr. Hayworth's property. This is coming from his Cedar Ridge Drive, south, or Cedar Ridge Edition, south of Cedar Ridge Drive. This is from the property that we're talking about this afternoon. This is the amount coming from Mariposa Edition. This is the amount from the undeveloped Block 5, that is next to the single-family area. You can see, because this was planned for townhomes of a higher density, it has almost as much runoff going to the pond as this does. This is from an area just to the north of Mariposa, and so, then, these are the percentages, if we look at the percentages of everything going into that pond. So, for the benefit of the planning commission, in 1995, the dam that, is the dam that serves the Mariposa Detention Pond failed. And the Mariposa Homeowners Association did not have sufficient funds to repair that dam. So, the City of Salina contributed funds to get it rebuilt and restored. But the original concept that Mr. Graves had, and this was referred to as the Mariposa Common Area and a Dry Bottom Pond, and in a Dry Bottom Pond, there are extended periods of time where the bottom is completely dry. And so, that was potentially looked at as perhaps multi-use space when it was dry. But it was set up with the Mariposa Homeowners Association being responsible for maintenance of the pond. What the difficulty that occurred was that when these properties were sold off separately and not developed by the Graves Family, they couldn't be part of the Mariposa Homeowners Association. So, if this had been Mariposa Edition Number 2, and this had been Mariposa Edition Number 3, and Mariposa Number 4, all these people would have been part of the Mariposa Homeowners Association, and all contributed towards maintenance of the pond. But what you have is you have a situation where the owners in this original Mariposa have an outsized burden of taking care of this pond that serves multiple areas. So, John, if you could find and locate for us that three-party agreement. Drainage maintenance covenants, please. Right, it's on the left. Okay, so, in 2009, there was a three-way agreement that was entered into between the Mariposa Homeowners Association, Cornerstone Development, which developed Grand Prairie, and the City of Salina. So, if you could keep scrolling, John. Keep going. Okay, stop. So, we are, the City of Salina is the owners of the municipal golf course. The Mariposa Homeowners Association has title to what is referred to as the Mariposa Park Common Area, which is the detention pond area. And there are, there were easements and maintenance covenants that were recorded. We provided those in your packet. If you could scroll up a little bit, John. You know, keep scrolling. You're going the wrong way. Okay, stop. The parties, without altering, amending, or affecting the enforceability of the 1990 maintenance covenants, desire to address an agreement whereby the Mariposa Homeowners Association agreed to grant a public sanitary sewer easement to the city. And there was also compensation to be paid by Cornerstone for that easement. And then, the responsibility for ongoing maintenance was set aside. So, if you could stop at subitem 3, John, get that to the top of the page. So, item A says, "The Homeowners Association for Mariposa shall continue to be responsible for the ongoing regular maintenance of the pond to the satisfaction of the city at the association's expense, including without limitation, regular..." association's expense, including without limitation, regular scheduled mowing, weeding, spraying for weeds, scrubbing, flume cleaning. City agrees to correct at this time an area of erosion that was developed at the head of a small flume." And Mr. Stack can address whether we went in and made those repairs on behalf of the So it has a provision that allows the city to go out and inspect the pond and notify the homeowners of the association if we think there's deficiency in the maintenance of the pond. And it allows the city to perform the necessary work and recover that cost from the association. So if you could keep going, John. This deals with major repairs or replacements. So if you recall, the sheet that was previous that showed the respective amounts of volume coming into the detention pond, it was determined that the city at large, with the golf course, the Hayworth properties, contributed 50% of the volume to the pond. The Mariposa, 18%, and Grand Prairie, 27.6%. And I think we've briefly discussed this with Mr. Hayworth, but basically, the city agreed to pick up the share of the volume coming off Mr. Hayworth's property, and it says that we're not precluded from having some cost recovery from Mr. Hayworth for a share of any expense that we incur under those covenants. So this would be for some sort of item like a failure of the dam or something that was a major repair that needed to be made. The costs would be shared in this proportion. And then what occurred was that there was a calculation of what Cornerstone's share would be. So if you can keep going, John. This deals with the identification of a need for repair or replacement. If we were to get a call from the homeowners association that said their dam was cracking and completely failing, Mr. Stack and his group would go out and identify what that would be, and then the city would cause the repair and replacement of that, and then we would send an invoice to the homeowners association for their share. But the city would pick up 53% of that cost. If you could keep going, please, John. Okay, so if you go to six, so we could read that, please. Okay, so Cornerstone refers to Grand Prairie, and they have caused, they have designed their stormwater detention requirements in conformance with the city's criteria, which include two detention ponds that are upstream from the Mariposa Pond. They have been constructed from a city-approved design plans under city contract, and they have been turned over to the city for perpetual maintenance responsibility. So the City of Salina maintains Cornerstone's or Grand Prairie's ponds, but they essentially paid the city a lump sum to take them off their hands. So if you could keep going, John. So if you want to keep scrolling. I guess I'll have to see if you, we skipped over the part of the, okay, so if you could go back to page five, John. So in consideration of commitments by the association, Cornerstone agrees to pay the homeowners association of the Mariposa $20,000. And the idea was that $20,000 would go into the fund to help maintain the pond as part of their, to have a fund to help with the general day-to-day maintenance responsibility for that pond. So just to summarize, prior to this agreement, if there was a major repair or something cracked in a flume, a major erosion problem, a pretending, potential failure of the dam, prior to this agreement, Mariposa Homeowners Association would have been responsible for 100% of the cost of that. Under this agreement, the City of Salina would be responsible for 53% of the cost of that. So the city has agreed to take that on, not on the day-to-day maintenance, but as to major repairs. So this was a three-way agreement between the city, Mariposa, and Cornerstone. And the way that it was set up was the city identified and calculated the contribution that Mr. Hayworth's property was sending to that pond, and the city agreed to pick up the proportionate share of that as it relates to the major repairs. That does not address the day-to-day operation. So if we could go back, John, and just get to the plat layout, we'll kind of walk through that, and then get, we'll get back into drainage a little bit more, but this wanted to set out the table for you. So this is the preliminary plat that's been submitted for your consideration. This is Cedar Ridge Drive. There's 22 building lots and a 23rd lot right here that would have a stormwater detention The direct access perimeter street that staff has determined for this property is Cedar Ridge Drive. And there are two proposed public street connections to that. And so our interpretation is that this subdivision has direct access to an approved perimeter street, except for the eastern portion, and that the developer is responsible at some point for improving the portion of Cedar Ridge Drive that does not meet city street standards. And so this property has about 1,100 feet of frontage on Cedar Ridge Drive. The entire northern boundary borders the fifth hole of the municipal golf course. And so Cedar Ridge Drive is a two-lane city street. It is considered to be a collector's street along the western 2/3s, roughly from this curve back. It's got curb and gutter and a sidewalk on the north side. The eastern portion over here, that roadway was annexed into the city in 1967. At that time, it was Cloud Street. It is paved, but there are segments there that connect to Markley Road that are only in fair condition. Some of it's cracked and in need of repair. There's about 1,100 cars per day that use this section of Cedar Ridge Drive. We think that the street layout pretty well conforms to with the existing topography. Both streets would be dead-end cul-de-sacs. This East Street would serve 13 building lots. This one would serve nine. They would have 60 feet of right-of-way, 33 feet of pavement. The radius for the turnaround would need to be 50 feet radius and 45 feet of paving within that radius. And so even though some of these lots would be adjacent or back up to Cedar Ridge Drive, they would not have driveways onto Cedar Ridge Drive. All lots on this plat have frontage on a public street, except for the detention pond, which is not buildable. The dimensions of those lots in terms of width, depth, or width, depth, and area are adequate and meet the R1 standards, so we don't see any lots here that would end up not being buildable. We pointed out that the, when Florida Soul was developed, public utilities were essentially brought to the doorstep here. And so the plan is, there's a line here in Cedar Ridge Drive that was connected to the Markley Water Tower. They would run lines here and tie it back to Florida Soul, come up here and tie it back. So we would have a loop system with two sources of flow. The sewer would be collected and taken up to this corner, and that would go over to Markley Road. And then that brings us back to the storm drainage plan related to this particular property. So our stormwater management regulations require a developer to design a storm drainage system to accommodate or detain the additional runoff that's caused by their development. In other words, the difference between what comes off the property today and what comes off in the exist, developed conditions. So we've got an onsite detention pond that's proposed here, and in the northwest corner, and runoff from this site and a portion of the property south of Cedar Ridge Drive currently goes across the golf course to the Mariposa Pond. And so the applicant has retained the services of Cal Valley Engineering to design this subdivision and to prepare a drainage study for Cedar Point Edition. So the main elements of that are, this is a 9.82 acre site, about 8.5 acres drain south across the golf course and over to the Mariposa Pond. The eastern portion is sloped and drains back to the east. The street runoff from Cedar Ridge Drive is collected in storm sewer inlets and also discharged to this area. So there are storm sewer inlets right here, and they discharge and discharge water towards the number six tee box today. The excess volume of runoff generated by the development will be detained in a pond in the northwest corner of the property. A 20, according to the calculations, a 25-year storm design would need to hold 16,000 cubic feet of water, and this is designed to accommodate 19,000 cubic feet. And the peak runoff from the development will remain the same as existing conditions. So we'll let the engineers get into the discussions about the peak runoff. But the controlled runoff or discharge from this pond will go over and around the tee box for the number six hole and enter the upper pond in the Grand Prairie addition. We're not talking about any ditches, swales, or channels across the golf course. So we actually had three meetings that Mr. Cotton attended, but most recently, the developer and his design engineers met with staff, and that included Mark Lidle, the course superintendent, the course pro, and Mr. Cotton, the Parks and Recreation Director, and other city staff, myself, Dan Stack, the city engineer, and Wayne Nelson, the civil engineer, to look at this drainage plan. The meeting helped to answer questions and provide additional details requested by the golf course staff. And as Mr. Baffa pointed out, also attached to your report is a written review by the city engineer of the drainage design. So John, we have some aerial photos there. If you could go to the drain, the bigger drainage map, perhaps? Not that one, the, it's a photograph, but it's maybe in, right there, no, right there. And it's unfortunately dark. You may have to zoom it just a little bit, please. No, it's maybe easier to see in your packets, but this red outline is the subdivision. This is the number six hole and tee box. There's a blue line on this map that follows through here. This is the upper pond for Grand Prairie. If you could keep scrolling to the top, John. Then we have, it goes to a lower pond, then it goes across the golf course, makes a bend across these north-south holes, and ends up in the Mariposa Edition. And Mr. Hers and I recall, 2008, we watched videos from a fairly heavy rain event where there was, there's quite a bit of slope here, and it's pretty impressive seeing the water come down this slope and into the pond when you have a heavy rain event. As it relates to this particular property, the idea is to detain the post-development runoff from this particular subdivision and release it at a controlled rate across the golf course, so it does no harm. John, if you could get out of this, and I think we have some maps that showed the area, smaller maps. These are probably the ones that were. Okay, they're attached to this, John. If you keep scrolling. Keep scrolling. Okay, I may have to rotate that. So this is the area that drains to the north and then west. You can see here, this is the green for hole number five, and this, these contours here show you the path of travel from the discharge of this going across there. If you could go to the next one, please, John. Okay. As a planner, I'm going to stop and pause right here, and I'm going to ask the engineers for the applicant, this is their slide, the red area depicts the path of the discharge from the pond, and I'm going to ask the applicant's engineer to explain the drainage system that they have designed.
Just to know, I work for Cal Valley Engineering. We were hired by Bob to look at the design of this subdivision. And basically, what, currently, the situ, right now, we have the storm sewer pipes that outlet and drain the road now. They run through a drainage, drainage swale here, and then continue on through the golf course. Here's the cart path for the six tee box, and then it continues on to the Grand Prairie Pond here. It's fairly well designed, or defined where it goes through. It's pretty wide, shallow flow as it is now. Right now, this area now drains through here, which was the slide we saw before. Also there, it kind of, it splits. Some of it goes down through here, some of it cuts straight across the fairway here. We propose cutting off this drainage across the fairway and bring it all down into this corner, which will slightly increase the flow through here, but will reduce flows that go across the fairway themselves. In discussions with the golf course, they, their concern was, we don't want to see increased flow through here. We're worried about erosion and that type of thing. And with our design of our pond, we're going to match or reduce the flow that goes through there, so we shouldn't see any increase in erosion due to that. And they were very interested in being able to reduce flow that actually goes across the fairways. It'll help keep the fairways drier. This situation, we don't plan to do any improvements, but we don't plan to make it any worse as And as far as to address, well, here's, this kind of shows the drainage that does go across the fairway here, and will now be routed into the pond here. And to kind of address some of the concerns with the Mariposa Pond, originally, like Dean said, this was designed with the one major pond downstream, and then you have a smaller pond, which is the pond that was built with the Grand Prairie Edition. I feel like, you know, our design kind of went above and beyond what the original Mariposa drainage report called for, which was only two ponds. We're putting in a third pond, which will help detain water and improve the overall drainage system, or it won't make it any worse because of our development. We're going to match existing conditions, and hopefully, you won't, the idea is, we're kind of going above and beyond what the original plan called for, and just hopefully, that will help relax everybody's concerns with what we're planning to do here. Are there any questions I could, yes?
Yeah. What data are you using to come up with those? Is that like a 50-year, or are they?
We, the city standard calls for looking at 25-year events, so we kind of designed to that, but we also look at 100-year. to that, but we also look at 100-year event just to make sure, you know, we don't wanna just design to a 25-year and then the 100-year event, you know, everything fails and doesn't work, but we look at it just to make sure that we're not gonna create any problems. And from what we saw in our data, we saw that, you know, we're meeting 25-year event, we're actually, our 25-year event will actually detain more than necessary and our 100-year event won't make the situation any worse than what it is now.
My concern is on, some Blue Greens algae studies on lakes, they were saying that starting in 2011, we had significant amount of rains over one inch, runoff rains started in 2011 and went to, 2018 was that study. And it was like a 25% increase. And I was just wondering if we're using, if we use those numbers, would we still be adequate on the size of the pond at Mariposa and some of those?
Well, we use drainage data that's in the city's design criteria, which I don't know that they've been updated for any new information. I know, yeah, we update our maps over years. The cities is very similar to drainage runoffs that you see from Kansas Department of Transportation. I know KDOT has recently updated theirs from, they've used the same ones since the 60s, they've updated here in the last, you know, after 40 years, made an update. So, actually, the cities, I believe their runoff, the runoff numbers they have are more conservative than what we see at KDOT. So, I feel comfortable that they are accurately portraying and maybe even a little bit on the conservative side.
Yeah, well, those were Corps of Engineers data that we were looking at back then and I was just concerned would a 25% increase be, would it be designed adequately for that increase?
Partially for the commission's perspective, if you recall, the 1990s, particularly the mid-1990s, that was a, we weren't worrying about drought, we were worrying about flooding and we had high groundwater levels and all those things. The city, up until that time, we required that residential detention ponds be designed for a 10-year storm and the city commission increased that to a 25-year storm design. So, partially in response to those additional rain events, the criteria was changed from a 10-year storm to a 25-year storm in terms of the sizing.
So, quick question on that. So, when would, when would have been the last time we had a 25-year storm? For perspective, I mean, in 93, when we had all the flooding, that would have been considered, what, about 100-year?
Not everywhere, but for the most part, the whole Salina, Saline County area, 93 was a 100-year flood. In 2007, we had a 100-year flood on Mulberry Creek in West Dry Creek. That was not a 100-year flood throughout the city, but the last major flood event for Salina was 2007. And so, you had Ohio Street, North Night Street, those were closed and covered with flooding from Mulberry Creek, but you had some of the southern and southeastern portions of the community that didn't experience that level of flooding because the 100-year event was in the Mulberry Creek basin. But, that would give you an idea that it's not so much the 100-year storm happens once every 100 years, it's that there's a 1% chance each year that you'll have an event of that magnitude.
Right, and I was just kinda looking back even to the rains that we had this year with the flooding that we had at other areas, does that end up, the volume that we had in other, in those areas, would that be similar to a 25 or 100?
Mr. Stack, could you share the precipitation amount and the time period that constitutes a 25-year storm?
Yes. I did just, I'm Dan Stack, city engineer, did pull up our drainage criteria. When we have designs, they have to design for kind of an inches per hour type of approach. They figure how long does it take a drop of water to get from somewhere over here to somewhere over here and our, kind of our minimum is 15 minutes. So, if a drop of water falls somewhere, you go 15 minutes. And that's really the most intense storm that we have on our charts and our criteria. So, a 10-year storm is 5.8, 5.88 inches per hour. So, that's, in 15 minutes, you know, that's coming down pretty fast. A 25-year is 6.85 inches per hour. So, that does take into account, I feel like, the one-inch margin that you just talked about where if you designed a 25-year, which Dean said happened in the 90s when they increased our, our storm detention pond sizes from 10-year to 25, that, I feel like it gives us margin and I do believe ours are, what Justin's saying about our criteria, they're pretty conservative, they have been for a long time. It's a pretty flat city, we live in a bowl, so we live in, you know, 80% of Salina's in, in a flood plain if it's not for our levee. So, we have to kinda take into account storage. Now, we have a lot of areas that will fill up with water, but typically, they don't flood someone's house. They flood the road or they flood the pond or they flood the area around your house. They don't flood your house or your facility. So, that's, that's just a little background on floods. We do get some pretty high intense storms, it seems like, but as Dean said, it doesn't seem like we've really had a 100-year storm since 93 in the bowl, or in the, in the actual, in the actual city proper. Mulberry Creek is north and west of here mostly. Does that answer the question? Other questions?
I have a question. So, last year, would any of the?
Would you mind, yeah, somebody in the audience, please?
So, last year's rains, would any of the rainfall have qualified under the 25-year rainfall patterns?
I don't, I don't know if we've researched that or heard that. I don't, we had a lot of rain last year, but I don't know if we had any that were in that, in that criteria and so, we'll just have to look. We didn't, surprisingly, didn't get a lot of, usually you hear from requests or you hear complaints from people who have had, you know, had flooding, have never had flooding before or something along those lines. We didn't get a lot of those last year, which was surprising because it was a very wet year. And I've walked in the Mariposa Pond, we did that, oh, a couple of months ago, just because of the Grand Prairie redevelopment as well as this one coming up, though we need to take a look at the Grand Prairie, or the Mariposa Pond. So, Wayne Nelson and myself did that, I believe November is when we did it. We have pictures and kinda looked at the dam and looked at the bottom and it was pretty mushy, it was. And it's, this has been a wet year and most areas of town are fairly mushy right now and your pond is one of them. So, also, to take that into fairness, the golf course has been doing a massive irrigation project, so it's hard to figure out, well, all the irrigation that's occurring, the new irrigation, the old irrigation being drained, all that's occurring over the last six months and so, we feel like, right now, the irrigation is off at the golf course. So, we will see if that will dry out over time or not and if the spring rains come. And right now, we've had a fairly wet winter, so that, that Mariposa Pond may not dry out for a while. So, there is, it is at the bottom of a very large drainage basin and it has been a wet year, but we didn't have, I don't believe we had, have had anybody that said, you know, we had 25-year event or anything like that yet. So, we'll have to check. I'll have to check before the next, I mean, the final platter, that's a good question. It'll come up on Grand Prairie as well.
One of our tests is that over on Austin Circle, east of the Dillon Store and on Ricky Circle, east of there, the ponds in those subdivisions are designed for 10-year storms and generally, if we have in excess of a 50-year rain event or a 25-year rain event, the ponds will back up into Austin Circle or Ricky Circle and then the calls will come in to the city. But, I don't recall any events this year where we received phone calls about barricading any of those streets or doing anything because, and that, that's usually the thing that tips us off and that was one of the reasons we went from a 10-year to a 25-year design is that those, those ponds, that 10-year design were backing up into the streets and that was not an acceptable condition, so.
There were some big rains, east of town, gypsum, that was a massive rainstorm, but it didn't, didn't hit Salina directly. We had some big rains south of town, so I guess we'll just have to look. I just, I know we had some people that reported lots in their rain gauges, but, you know, that whole 25-year storm, six and a half, you know, 6.8 inches in 15 minutes, that's an intense rainfall and I don't think we had that. We had, so we had some five and six-inch rains last year, but hopefully not in that short of a period of time.
But even if you don't have what meets the definition of a 25-year rain, if you have, you said, I think the 25-year is 6.85 inches per hour, but let's say you have four inches per hour for several days, that, that could be what filled up the pond?
Yeah, that's correct, it's just not as intense, but it's a longer period of time, so it's, wouldn't qualify as a 25-year event, but it would still be a lot of rain and that, the ponds are designed to fill up. This one actually has 100-year capacity, which is pretty impressive for a pond. So, it can store a massive rain event and still let it out at the same, you know, slow rate, basically. 10 CFS is what comes out of that area now. They've designed their pond to store up any massive amounts of water that come down and rush into this area. Well, it has, it's gonna build up and come out at the same rate as before. So, what happens is that comes, the flow rate's the same, comes through their pond at the same rate, just happens over a longer period of time. And that's what you see with a lot of those ponds, is the bottom stays wet longer, water keeps coming longer, but it doesn't, you know, fill up the pond and blow it out or cause the dam to fail or overwhelm the pipes in the ponds, but it does come over a longer period of time. And that's pretty basic and normal for US drainage criteria. Everybody has to detain as you go up the hill. You know, if you buy at the bottom of the hill, you're, it's the way it goes, it's just part of the deal, it's gonna run there, there's nothing you can do about it. But, you try to minimize the effects of that as you build up the hill and that's what the Graves family envisioned. And yes, they are building a third pond, so we feel like that's, that's a bonus.
Can anything be done with the Mariposa Pond being at the end of the road? I mean, it's kind of like, it's the, it kinda gets at all.
Gets at all, mm-hmm. It is the last, the very bottom of the hill. I don't know, when we were out there a few months ago looking at it, the bottom is soupy and wet, but surprisingly, they have pretty good grass stand down there. There's a few cattails where there's areas that maybe could be filled in, but it's, you know, it's one of those things where if we have a drier year, we've, we would see probably that dry up, but if we don't have a drier year for the next three or four years, it's gonna be pretty wet for a while. So, it's, it's a good question. Last year was a wet year, so we'll have to see what this year brings. We don't, we didn't see any risky areas that were, you know, erosion or any kind of pipe failures or holes in the dam or anything like that. So, we wouldn't think it would rise to a level of needing major maintenance, just, you have to take a weed eater to cut down some things periodically, so you can't get the mower in there because the mower sinks in the mud. That's really the bottom line and we have that same problem with, we're gonna have, we have seven ponds as a city that we maintain and we have the same problems today and continue to.
So, it's not an issue with them staying wet in that area? Like we've said, I mean, longer term rains going through, we have another wet season this year, we have another wet season next year, ponds are still gonna maintain that water and go through, it's just gonna stay wet on the bottom.
Stay wet on the bottom, yep, that's correct. A little harder to mow. Surprised they've been able to mow it as well as they did because there wasn't very many, wasn't very much tall grass there at all, but there was a few areas they couldn't get to with a mower.
What's the design criteria on the Mariposa Pond for 100-year flood, 50-year flood? What's, what's it designed?
I don't, I don't remember what they, we looked at that in Grand Prairie in 2008, I'm not sure how big it is, so we'll have to look into that. It, it has, I don't know if it's been over top of them, the year it got blown out. And the year it got blown out, it was because of the, the way I understand it, was the culvert and it was plugged. It wasn't, there was something that plugged it, which caused it to blow out. Whereas now, I feel like they maintain it really well, they, it's a big deal to make sure it doesn't plug, so they understand that and it seems like they have a pretty good, there wasn't anything plugging it when we were there the last time and it's got good, very well mown, there's no trees that could, you know, fall on it. It's, if you can keep it very well maintained, the water will, will go through it and not blow out the dam. Is that fair to say, Dean? Wasn't, wasn't there some?
Yeah, I think there was a trash basket and something else that was all.
Caused some problems, right.
Plugged up and caused an erosion problem.
Right. But the city, I believe, helped them fix that the last time and we're, now we agree to help them in the future forever, basically. So, it's a, it's a group effort.
Is there ever any thought of green infrastructure? It seems like this would be a place to put rain gardens and, you know, that are designed to collect water. Or, it seems like golf courses always irrigate and here we're just pushing this water through. And I know that's traditional design, civil, civil design, civil engineering design. We do try to get water off as fast as we can, but it seems like it's reasonable, especially at a golf course, to think about retaining it.
Yeah, that's interesting because that, the original plan for Grand Prairie had a, had a pond actually on the course around number 13, between 12 and 13. So, that was the original idea, was to actually put water on the course, but that was, was before I got here.
Golfers probably didn't appreciate that.
I guess, you know, it was shot down. It's interesting, you know, water's part of golf courses, a lot of places, but they didn't want it to be part of that one. So, this one, you, you can still hit it in the water, but it's not very easy where it is now, there's not much, not much water in those Grand Prairie ponds. But, yeah, the, as far as answering your original question, there's a lot of cities that have gone with trying to do more, instead of big ponds, they do rain gardens and smaller, smaller mitigation practices, you know, ditched streets or, you know, instead of putting curbs and gutters, which collect it and make it go really fast, you go back to ditched streets. So, there's, there's a lot of things out in different cities and communities in the nation where people are trying things like that. So, it's, it's something that would have to come from probably the planning commission to the city commission and it'd have to be bought by the community at large to a certain extent because it's expensive and it's a lot of maintenance, but it's, it is, it's a good question.
And maybe that's the reason not to do it as a maintenance, but it just seems like you do.
Expensive and maintenance is the hard part, right.
You do a lot of maintenance at the golf course anyway and a lot of irrigation and so, it seems like there might be an opportunity rather than just collecting the water for release.
Yeah, the ponds, when you, when you build them to actually be retention ponds, you have to just build them bigger. That's the hard part about where those ponds are, they really have to be dry so that they can take all the water that's supposed to go to them, fill up and then release it at a controlled rate. If they're already full of water, retention pond looks nice and is attractive and is good for golf courses in some ways, but they'd have to build them quite a bit bigger, basically, to, to store up, to build them large and then have a massive drainage, basically, what would it be, like a bigger dam and area that it can flood and still release at the same rate? Otherwise, they just have to stay dry. So, most of the ponds in Salina, I think all of ours are dry. In, in big cities, you'll see where they have retention ponds with, that look pretty nice, their amenities to a certain extent, but around here, they stay mostly dry.
I can't translate the numbers, but it appears from the notes here that the original Mariposa Pond's storage capacity is 11.5 acre feet of water.
I want to talk about the question. Oh, go ahead. So, the, in the Grand Prairie addition, because I know we were talking about the retention basin on the new area, but in the Grand Prairie addition, from the original map where there was the two retention ponds, where in there, where is it sitting in there?
This is their proposed pond area right here.
Right, but in the Grand Prairie addition, where is it at?
It goes right through, through here, I believe, are the two ponds, yeah, right, this one and this one.
It's the upper pond and the lower pond.
Yep.
So, those are the two ponds in that part of it?
Correct. There's a pond here and it's crossroad, basically, culvert goes to this pond that outlets onto the golf course there. So, there used to be ponds there actually even before the, before this development existed, there was a pond in that area as well, so it was a natural place for a pond.
Right, so that follows in line with the, well, the drainage map where we've got the blue line running through, those blue lines run right through those two areas.
Could you go back to that one, John? The other drainage map? Be that one, the one on the, the one that you had, John, on the lower, lower level?
That one?
That one.
Yeah.
It's a little bit dark, we apologize. Did the best we could, but it, that, maybe zoom it a little bit, John? So, you can see the blue line?
Yeah, there's the, there's the blue line, there's, yeah, those, that's the upper pond and there's the lower pond and there's number 13 tee box, basically, for the golf course, 12 green and 13 tee box. It runs right along six, like you said, six tee box, that's, there's kind of a low spot there and it just runs between the tee box and the front of the tee, basically the cart path there and runs over to those ponds.
Would you discuss how the peak runoff from the development area can remain the same after development?
After development? Okay.
If I read that right.
Yeah, the idea with the detention pond design is they, they take the pre-development condition, which is basically most time grass and whatever's at grass or whatever's there at the time. It's usually a fairly, it's kind of a impervious, it's pervious. So it's impervious, impervious conditions is when you build a lot of driveways, streets, roofs, that kind of thing. So that's impervious. Pervious areas is mostly grass and field, which is what's there now. And so they have to take the rainstorm and drop it on the pervious area, which is the grass and pasture area, and see what that rate of water is that goes from the end of that. In that case, it's 10 CFS approximately for this area. So then once they put in all the final development, which would be streets and buildings and curbs and gutters and driveways, they increase the impervious area, which is basically, water's just not going to soak in as much, so it's going to run around and then run into the storm sewer. And so it's going to, less water will soak in. And so they have a percentage that they take into account that includes those areas. And it says it's going to be 55% approximately is going to runoff. That's usually what it is. And when you have grass and impervious areas, it's 20 to 30% is going to runoff. You know, the majority of it's going to stay or soak in or not runoff very fast. So they take that difference from the impervious area to the higher density, and they have to store it, basically. So that's where, that's where they say, okay, this, this much water is going to runoff. We can't have that much water running off at that rate. So then we have to store it and keep it coming off at the same rate. And so their pond is designed with a, basically a smaller outflow that regulates it, governs it, orifice plate, some kind of a way to make sure the water doesn't come out any faster than what was there before we had development. And that's when the pond starts to fill up and water goes out at the same rate, hopefully. That's the idea. That's the goal.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
I guess I've got a question. Okay, so for the Mariposa group, who's been there longest, what would, what in the scheme of things would make that a comfortable idea or for the drainage? I mean, I'm still, I'm still lost on the, at the end of the road, here's this, you know, that takes it all. And so, Mark, what are you saying? Are you saying that you're witnessing, it's like a terrible thing? Or what really is happening?
If I could, I've got a jump drive here that just shows, and the reason I asked about how last year's would qualify under the 10, a 25, or 100, is I've, I've got some video just taken last summer of our pond. And it's pretty scary when you think that the 45 homeowners from Mariposa are responsible for 47% of the upkeep of this thing, and this water's rushing in here and not after a 25-year run. So if you guys would like to, I don't know. I apologize now. It's, the video's a little blurry, but I think you'll be able to see.
And do you recall when you took it, which month?
It was taken by one of the other homeowners. So I couldn't tell you. I'm going to guess it was, it was during the time when we had, you know, maybe six or seven days of moisture. Okay.
Okay, I can get to it.
I don't, I don't have an answer for you on how comfortable, how we can get comfortable. I just know, and I'm not.
Oh, you need to talk into the mic, please.
Yeah, if you please.
I'm sorry. I'm not an engineer. I can't speak to the studies that were done. I'm just the guy that's in charge of making sure that our homeowners are taken care of and that we don't end up with a huge bill. When all this development is happening around us, all this water's coming to this detention pond that we're 47% responsible for, and I think you looked at the numbers, we've got 10%, 10.8% of the water going in there. And we're footing almost half the bill for any repairs on it. And when the water level rises at the level that we've seen even last year, it's pretty scary to think that, you know, that we could have a blowout and suddenly I've got to send a bill to these homeowners. And all this water's coming from everywhere else, not us.
When do you restructure the agreement? I mean, it's much different than it was in the beginning when it was just Mariposa, and that was the first leg and all this. Now there's like leg three, leg four. I don't know. I mean, at some point, everybody's kind of got to pull their weight with the different areas and everything. I don't know. I think, it seems like these, that land is so pretty. It's beautiful. I mean, the lots are lovely, and all of it is beautiful. But it seems like at the end, and I don't blame you, all those lovely homes in Mariposa, I lived there for a little while too, and it's beautiful. And so you just don't want to jeopardize one area in the pursuit of adding more. I get it.
Yeah.
Does that third pond put your mind at ease at all, that additional retention pond that they're talking about putting in?
It, you know, the fact that, that they have assured us that it won't be worse, I mean, that's a, you know, that's a bit of a comfort, but it certainly, it certainly doesn't make me feel any better. I'm concerned now, which is why you've seen me here before talking about the Grand Prairie portion.
I understand.
So.
Like you, I'm also not an engineer. And really, at the end of the day, we have these experts that come and tell us, you know, this quantifiable data, and yes, it will fit within these parameters, and it's going to drain off at this certain rate. And at the end of the day, as a commission, that's really what we have to go by more than anything. And we really understand your concerns, but if we have engineers telling us, hey, this passes muster, so to speak, we're kind of at an impasse as to, you know, we're choosing quantifiable data versus I have a feeling about this, or I don't like what I'm looking at. It's kind of a tough spot for us to be in.
Yeah. And it's a tough spot for us to be in.
No, and I understand that as well. And I, for what it's worth, I have family in your subdivision as well. So it's one of those things where regardless, it carries a lot of weight. But there's also a certain level of, these are experts, and they're giving us information that says it's okay. So just trying to give you our perspective on it.
Yes, understood.
Yeah, in those same lines, I would tell you, I mean, it almost appears that without the retention pond, if we continue to have the rains like we have, you'd have more going into that pond at a lot quicker rate without the detention pond there if it's being developed. Because you can't control it at that point in time. Because the detention ponds, I'll go back to the engineers and make sure that I'm saying this correctly, but it's designed to only let it flow out at a certain speed or rate. So if that, you can control that with the detention pond. If it's not developed, if we don't agree to it, you're going to get whatever comes off of it just naturally, which it could be faster than what the detention pond is designed to do. So it could fill up your pond actually faster.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought I heard that, that with the development and with the detention pond, that it, that the hope is that it would, it would not send water any faster or at a higher velocity than, than what it currently comes in the undeveloped state.
Right. But if, say that we get a 25-year storm, or we get multiple days of not the six whatever inches per hour, whatever it is, but we're below that at four, and we have four to five days of that, the rate could be higher than what the detention pond is. Is that what I'm getting from?
I wouldn't say that it would be any higher, but.
Would you mind coming up to the podium? It's a formality we just need to observe.
I guess we looked at, you know, 25-year event, which is a pretty large vent, and assuring that it will be less, or match, it'll be the same. At lesser events, you could possibly see a reduction because you do have that pond storing up. I know at the 25-year event, it's going to be the same. The 100-year, it's going to be the same. But anything lesser than that, you've got, you do have storage that wasn't there before. So you could probably see actually lower, lower flows at lower year intervals. So.
Is there anything that catches the golf course runoff? There's no detention pond that slows that down?
No.
And that's by far the biggest contributor. So.
That's right.
You'd put in some obstacles, some ponds and rain gardens.
Any more questions?
Well, you have options. If the, if you think that the video is part of, important part of the public hearing or testimony, then we can continue this hearing to try to get the video to allow it to be displayed so that can become part of the hearing record. But that would be a choice for the planning commission, whether you want to continue this to allow the video to be viewed. The, as far as the agreement, the three-party agreement, I think that would, to a degree, you could have an opinion or recommendation on that. But the, whether the three-party agreement is amended or needs to be amended or whatever would ultimately be a decision for the governing body if they want to change that. One of the things that we addressed in our report, the part that we didn't get to, but it's an ongoing subject of discussion, as Mr. Stack mentioned, the city, there's two choices a developer has as it relates to a detention pond. Option A is that there is a homeowners association for that subdivision, and the homeowners association owns, controls, and maintains the detention pond. The other option that we have set out on page nine of your report is that in many cases, a developer doesn't want to create a homeowners association whose sole purpose and function is just to maintain a pond and nothing else. So in those instances, the city has provided an option for the developer to pay a maintenance fee to the city that the city calculates. And then upon payment of that fee, the city undertakes the maintenance of that detention pond, where we're paid to take it off the developer's hands. So the developers of Grand Prairie paid the city of Salina a lump sum, and the city, through its golf course staff, maintains those ponds. Mr. Stack's staff maintains a number of detention ponds around town. In the case of, over by River Trail and Golden Eagle, there's a big oxbow, Old River Oxbow over there that serves as detention. That is owned and maintained by the River Trail Homeowners Association, not the city. So that option is an option for the Mariposa Homeowners Association. But I, my past experience was that the, the fee that the city was going to require to be paid to take over responsibility was higher than what the homeowners association wished to pay. But that, that is something that can be revisited. But we wanted to explain that in the case of this development because I don't believe Mr. Hayworth is going to create a homeowners association for the sole purpose to take care of this pond, although it's an option for him. The other option is that he can pay the city of Salina a maintenance fee and then dedicate the pond in that corner to the city of Salina for maintenance.
I do have one other thing I want to add. I kind of build on what your comment was. The original design of the Mariposa Pond called for the main pond and the second pond. So you had that amount of storage there. With our third pond, we are adding storage that would not have been there in the original design of the pond. So there's a little bit of extra, I guess, redundancy there that we're stalling that according to, if we followed the Mariposa Drainage Study to a T, we don't, we're not required to detain anything. It was supposed to be held in that second pond. So there, we are adding redundancy. There is going to be some extra storage that wasn't there before. So if we were to develop this according to the Mariposa Drainage Study, this development would increase the flows that you would see in the Mariposa Pond over what you're seeing today. And we're not going to, with our pond, that's not going to happen. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
So thoughts on the video footage? Do we need to see that before we make a decision?
I think we do, only because that's here and now. I mean, we're working with hypotheticals. We're working with, you know, yes, you know, people, engineers and everybody that are doing all the data and all the, which is fantastic. But at the same time, I mean, if I were a homeowner over in Mariposa, I would like to.
It's another reference point.
Yeah. I mean, I'd like to know what's going on, you know, today.
I agree.
Was the city of Houston had three 100-year rain events in one year?
I mean, at some point, though, there is also kind of a, we can't plan for every single contingency.
I know.
As, I mean, our infrastructure, and I think it's probably worth stating, I've been a resident here majority of my life. In my recollection of rainwater runoff as a kid in the 70s, I'm dating myself a little bit, was horrible. South Salina, I remember areas, I mean, I lived on Leland Way. I remember Aurora, Magnolia. It was a hot mess. And I've watched as our infrastructure's improved, that whatever they're doing is working because their streets are getting better. There's less problems with it. So my tendency is to trust what the engineers do say and their data. But I think it behooves us to take a look at that video. And like I said, it's another reference point for our decision.
But the video is going to show you what's currently occurring?
Yeah.
And if this is platted and we have their detention pond, that's going to not increase what's currently happening? Because we should be able to control the flow better with the detention pond that's going on. And if they do it in phases, they're phase one and then phase two, you're still going to have the normal runoff and drainage. It's going to be soaked into the ground that is going through that. And I'm not saying that there's not an issue with what's currently going on. I'm just saying, based on the information that we've got right now.
It wouldn't get worse.
Detention pond, we're not going to make a, it's not going to make it worse. If anything, it should help control it so it doesn't flow in there any faster than in a worst-case scenario.
I'm just putting myself in the, in the position of the homeowner at Mariposa. I mean, I'm just saying. Yeah. So, yeah. And again, the structure of the, I don't know. I don't know. I mean, I just, I don't know why, why is the Mariposa Homeowners Association in charge of the bulk of everything happening with all the new development? That doesn't even make sense to me.
Playing their prize for being first, I guess.
Right. No, I don't think that's okay.
I get it.
So I don't. So I, I don't, I don't know if the issue is the, the running off and all this and the other. I think it boils down to a handful of people who are getting tagged hard for, you know, growth and, and, you know.
Well, the other owners in the other divisions have paid, because it probably was built into the price of the...
Right.
Lots instead of at the end.
Right.
Because they did pay the city to maintain those, or the developer did to maintain those other ponds.
And I don't know, and like you said, Dean, there's options and there's alternatives, or there's, you know, everybody stays the course. I don't know anything about any of that. All I know is if, I keep trying to put myself in everybody's shoes, and, and that would just be one that I, I would be uncomfortable there, not knowing what's coming down the pike.
So we're all agreed that we need to see the video first, then?
I don't, I don't.
I don't either, but I'm glad to. I mean, I, it...
I just...
I, and we saw a photo, someone did pass around a photo, it could have been at the same timeframe, of a pond that was full, I mean, the Mariposa pond being full.
That was from the late...
Thank you.
That was from the late 90s. The video was actually taken July 4th last year, so.
Okay.
Well, that opened a conversation up to, if, if we were to see the, the, the video, I mean, is, is there a conversation that needs to happen with, with the, the big, at the end of the road pond at Mariposa?
Well, I think just like Dean said, I don't know if that holds up to development, but at the commission level, that's where that agreement's with.
I know, and I hear, I hear it.
That's where that ends up. It doesn't, I don't know if that ends up here, but it ends up at the commission level, and it was a time, I mean, they said earlier, it was all Mariposa, and they were able to negotiate this agreement the last time with, with Grand Prairie and get 5347, which was, it seems it was better, better than they had before. And so as, as developments happen, and as they petition the commission, or as, as they, as their voice is heard, it's at more of the city commission level, though I just want to make, make sure you all understand that. It's the, you're dealing with more of a planning of property that the guy, the person owns that he's trying to develop, and so the, the more of the maintenance of Mariposa, I don't know how that factors into that decision, other than...
So that's really not our concern?
Well, that's, that's my, that's my concern, I guess. You can watch the video. What I'm hoping you'll see, too, is a pond that's full, and water's rushing through that pipe, just fine. That's my hope, is what we're going to see.
It's working, it's working, yes.
It's going to be working awesome, but it's going to be full, it's going to look, from my perspective, it looks pretty cool, but yeah, from, from somebody who has to maintain it and is concerned about the dam breaking, that's a different story. So I can, I can totally understand, but yeah, it's water and dams is, is pretty, you'll see, hopefully that it's working.
Intense, yeah.
It's intense, and it's, yeah, that was a big storm July 4th of last year.
Have we, have we revisited the sizing on that, on the detention pond at Mariposa? What happens if we increase that sizing on it? Is there potential for flooding something downstream? Where's that water go? It goes to the smoky bit.
Yeah, goes through, ends up, let's see, where's that at there?
Goes across Marymount Road and over by East Bank Estates.
Right, it, it ends up in somebody else's backyard, and before it gets to the smoky, and has to cross Country Club as well, or not, is that Country Club?
Crosses Marymount.
That's what I meant, Marymount, Country, Marymount, crosses Marymount, and the box is sized accordingly for that. I don't know if there's any more property to make it any bigger, that's the hard part. Once it's built, there's, nobody wants to give up their property to build a bigger pond or a lake usually, that's, that's, that's too expensive, so I don't know if it can get any bigger.
And that lets out of the, what you said, 10 cubic feet per second?
Well, the one they're designing is up here at the very top of the boundary, this one's the 10 cubic feet per second in this corner right here.
Okay.
For, this is, this is the one these guys are designing.
Okay.
We can, we can report on the Mariposa sizing, and it's going to be a lot more than 10 CFS, or more than, it's, it's just a bigger pond, bigger area, and pretty large pipe that comes out of that thing, but it also is a massive pond, so it fills up with big water, but it's a 30-inch, at least 30-inch pipe or bigger that's coming out of that thing. So it's, it's, it's a big amount of water, it's impressive, compared to maybe this 10 CFS one, it won't be quite as impressive as that.
It just seems like that should be stored and, and used to irrigate the golf course.
Talk the golfers into it, we're set.
Right. Well, and I don't, you know, I mean, like, in a tank or something, not necessarily in...
Not an idea.
Yeah, it just seems crazy that we use treated water to golf, to water the golf course, and we have all this rainwater that we...
They have good, they have good wells. They have good wells. I do want to, I do want to clear that they have a really good well that comes right off the river, straight up Crawford and right over to the golf course, so they use a lot of well water, I think most all. Is that fair to say, Chris, Mr. Cotton there?
Yes.
It's pretty much all well water, so it's, it's going down, it's filtering out, it's coming back up the hill. It's, it's a decent recirculation system, so we'll, we'll go with that.
That sounds better, that feels better.
Appreciate the information.
Yeah, there's not chlorinated water going out on this golf course very often.
So if we were to continue these items to your next meeting, besides the video, is there information about the Mariposa pond that the planning commission would request us to provide?
I would like to see the sizing of the discharge pipe there, and then the two culverts going under the roads, if that's, if possible.
Yeah, I think, I have, I have a note to, to do it, I just haven't made it yet, but the, I have a note to visit the cage, which is in the basement of this building, and in the cage is all the files and everything, from the Mariposa addition in 1988, and I'm confident that I can locate those and get all that original information, so.
I haven't spoke yet, so. My name is Bob Hayworth, I'm the actual developer, so I was kind of waiting for everybody to stop talking for a while, so, trying to just butt in, I guess, before you make a decision. I thought we were coming basically to try to get a zone from ag to residential, and to agree that's a property that should be, you know, a good for Salina, being surrounded by other residential areas, to do that zoning. And then also, I thought I was coming for a preliminary plat, not a final plat, a preliminary plat, to state how we did it, and then we also looked at the water discharge, that we're not discharging it any worse than anything else. That's not going to change. So anything that's below that point, logically, the engineers worked on all of that, and they've done it for the last several years, working on all the engineering, make sure that that's right. So, I'm not for sure how that would stop my development for something that the engineers already say is correct and done correctly below, or why I should say that I shouldn't have a residential development there at all, because engineering's not right, because look at this picture here. And we've been told that the ponds are supposed to fill up, and they're supposed to drain out, and that's the right way that a pond's working. So, I would hope that I could continue with ag, knowing that you agree with ag to residential, and that you do also agree to my preliminary plat, so we could proceed for what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I kind of agree with him. What is existing, if it's not going to contribute any additional stormwater, it's not going to affect those nine acres. What has happened in the past at Mariposa and that stormwater is an existing problem, not a problem that will be added to. And, you know, why should we stop this development if it's not going to add anything to the existing major detention pond?
Right. And I would agree, too. I mean, by adding the detention pond to this area isn't going to increase what's already happening, and that's why I was saying is, the discharge from this isn't going to be any greater than anything that's currently going on. And I would agree with him that our original meeting for today was to make the decision of, are we going to change this from A1 to R1? Does it fit into what our current plan is? And then from that, on the original plat that they have, the preliminary plat is, does that fit within the city guidelines with it? And I think on all of those points, we probably have enough information. I don't want to pull some, another area into what's going on with...
However, you don't want to...
What we're doing here.
Yeah, right, as long as one area is not sacrificed for another.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
That would be, and if it isn't, then, then, right, I get it. And we should move on.
Yeah.
So...
So, I guess from all of our discussions, so at this point in time, do we need to, at some point, start making, looking at the original 3.1, the Z 1911, and then the P 19.4, and make a motion on those, on what exactly we're going to do with those? Move forward with it, or hold it?
One, one thing that I want to do is recall, I don't think there's any issues, per se, with the question of whether this property is suitable for residential zoning. However, if the, there is a connection between the zoning and, and having a plat, and so making a recommendation on zoning, but not on the plat, would be giving Mr. Hayworth a half a loaf at best, which would mean that the plat would have to come back. And so, one of the, we have provided for you on page 11 and 12, a summary of, of possible findings as relates to these, these criteria, which are in your packet. So, one of the things, I just want to walk you through this attachment here, says, "After the planning commission has reviewed the proposed preliminary plat and considered other testimony presented and exhibits submitted at the public hearing, the planning commission shall approve or conditionally approve the preliminary plat if it finds that all of the following criteria have been satisfied." So, all the application requirements have been met, they're not requesting any variations. If you could keep scrolling, John. This proposed subdivision is located inside the city limits, it's adjacent to existing development supported by public infrastructure. Adequate public infrastructure exists or can reasonably constructed to serve the subdivision with streets, city water service, city sanitary service, sewer service, and emergency sirens, that there's going to be adequate police protection, fire protection, access to parks and school to serve the residents. The proposed subdivision abuts a perimeter street that either meets or will be upgraded to meet the standards set forth in the subdivision regulations, that the proposed subdivision represents an overall development pattern consistent with the comprehensive plan, that it integrates with existing and proposed street network, provides connectivity with adjacent subdivisions and schools, and supports walking, and obviously, there's an existing sidewalk on Cedar Ridge Drive that would need to be extended. We're not on an arterial street, so that brings us to 11, if you could scroll up to the top. So, there are no, at this point, and Mr. Hayworth can indicate yea or nay, in Cedar Ridge addition, you have a homeowners association, is there any thought about having that here, or is your thought that you would turn this pond over to the city?
Turn the pond over to the city.
Okay, so there would not be any common areas, so as you see number 12 there, in the case of Mariposa addition, since there, there, they have some walking paths and trails in Mariposa, they also have the detention pond, those are common areas, and one of the things that staff does is make sure that there are covenants and things in place to make sure that any common area is, there's maintenance provided for, and that's what we have in your packet, is the maintenance covenant for the Mariposa pond. We're not going to have any common area in this plat. So that gets us to 11, and so, based on the information, the testimony, the exhibits, everything you've heard, and you have not seen, which would be the video that we're, sorry, we're technically not able to display, the question really focuses on 11, and that's whether a majority of planning commissioners believe that Mr. Hayworth's proposed subdivision makes adequate provision for stormwater runoff control. And if you think you can't answer that question till you view the video, then continuing consideration of this item to a future meeting, or postponing consideration, would be the choice. If you think, based on everything that's been presented today, that you can make that finding, then that would justify making the decision on the preliminary plat today. So that's, as we review these criteria, that seems to be the, the biggest area of focus this afternoon.
So, do, for question, do we do, need to do the zoning first, or can we do the plat first?
In order of things, it would be to recommend, an action to recommend what the zoning should be for the planning commission's benefit. If, if you make a recommendation to change the zoning, that recommendation would go forward to the city commission to see if they agree with that. And then, that would be first reading, Mr. Hayworth would not get final approval of a zoning change till he had a final plat that came back before this body and was approved. So this is a preliminary plat, so the steps would be, recommendation from you on the zoning, and a preliminary plat. That preliminary plat does not go to the city commission. Then, the zoning question would go to the city commission. If they are agreeing that this should be zoned R1, then that would tell Mr. Hayworth that he can move forward with preparing a final plat of this property, and then that final plat would come back for your review and decision. And then, the actual final approval of the zoning would not take place until and unless Mr. Hayworth had a final plat that you were comfortable approving. So, when we, you see the recommendation there on the zoning question of recommending approval of R1 zoning, subject to satisfactory plating of the property, this preliminary plat is just a step one, and if the city commission views this as R1 property, then that would indicate to Mr. Hayworth that, and his team, that they can come back with a final plat. So, this is a preliminary plat, and nothing would be final until there's a final plat that comes back. But from staff's perspective, it's a question, this is a finding that the planning commission's supposed to make, and you shouldn't approve a preliminary plat unless you think the proposed subdivision makes adequate provision for stormwater runoff control.
Thank you. One, or one thought I had on that video, the more I think about it, there's really not going to be any quantifiable data you can glean from watching it, so at least from my perspective, I'm okay with making a decision without looking at it.
Well, and to look at everything that, I mean, Mr. Hayworth has checked all the, the list off, as far as what he's, what he's wanting to do, and what our role is, I mean, I'm not an engineer, I don't, I, I'm, we're just, we have to listen to those who are experts in each area, and so, he, he's done everything he is supposed to do.
But if, and as Mr. Stack mentioned, and I mentioned, the three-party agreement was signed by the mayor, the president of the homeowners association, and, and cornerstone development, but if the planning commission has a position, or feeling, or thoughts that even with this agreement, the percentages are not equitable, you can certainly make, make that statement.
Is that separate from this?
That would be separate from this.
Right.
But if, if that, if you want to get that recorded in the minutes as part of any action you would take on this, that you think that the existing three-way agreement needs to be reopened, then you can certainly follow up any action you take with that.
Okay. So I would like to do that, so, but do we first do the zone?
Yeah, 3.1A would be a recommendation on the zoning, and we've, we've provided options for you, if I can find the correct page.
It's at on page nine.
On page nine of your zoning staff report, you could recommend approval of the applicant's request for R1 zoning, subject to satisfactory plating of the property.
Okay, so I move that we accept the application Z 19-11 to approval of the applicant's request for R1 zoning, subject to satisfactory plating.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay, so now the part-
So now the part, what we've, we've done on, if I get my, so on page 13, um, of your P 19-4 report, um, it says there that, um, if all policy issues and technical issues, which drainage would be a technical issue, have been addressed to the satisfaction of the planning commission, and the commission wishes to approve this preliminary plat application, we've recommended a set of conditions there on page, um, 13. And item eight there, that, that would be the final part of that. But the applicant shall obtain a letter from the city engineer approving the final storm drainage design plan and runoff calculations prior to consideration of a final plat. So this is not, um, there, there will still be information, more refined information provided with the final plat as to the, the sizing and, and those things. But if you feel that those findings that were on the screen there have been met by this application, then you could approve this preliminary plat. And we've outlined, um, 11 recommended conditions on the, of, of approval. And, uh, so if, if you are so inclined, you could, you could approve the preliminary plat, subject to those identified conditions. And then for a third action, if you wanna take a position on the current three-way drainage agreement, that, that would be a action that you could take after any action you might take on the preliminary plat, which could be to postpone consideration, to see the video, to approve it, subject to those conditions, or tend to deny it altogether.
Okay, so then I motion that we approve application P 19-4 with the recommended conditions on page 13 and 14 of the preliminary plat.
Seconded.
It's been motioned and seconded.
Could I ask, I just wanna make sure, did Mr. Hayworth see the conditions and you're okay with them?
Favor.
Oh, okay, good. Great, thanks. Thanks.
All right. Been motioned and seconded. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right. So before we move on to anything, we'll see if the, is there any action that the commission wants to take in regard to your thoughts on the three-party-
Yes, but how to word that, I mean-
Well, um, I guess I'd refer you to, um, the, the proportions there where essentially, um, the, the city has a 53% share, the Mariposa has essentially a 46.4% share. If, if you think that that is still inequitable based on what's happening around, um, in this drainage basin and needs to be revisited, then, um, the way to word that is that the, the planning commission thinks that the current agreement is still inequitable and puts an undue burden on Mariposa and should be reopened.
So moved.
I'll second that. It's been motioned and seconded. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
So that will be reflected in your minutes and we'll go to the city commission when this, the only, the plat will not go to the city commission, but the zoning question will.
And also the last, last motion?
The what?
The last motion.
Last motion, yes, will go to the city commission as, as a follow-up to, we will report that the preliminary plat was approved, but as a follow-up, that was your recommendation as relates to this three-party agreement.
Okay.
Um, we do not have any administrative items for you this evening. We do have, um, a preliminary discussion item, and that is on the subject of front yard parking. And, uh, we were gonna have some of our code enforcement officers come down for this, but I think the hour's gotten too late for them to join us. But, um, essentially, we have a provision in our ordinance that, and this particularly applies in residential areas, but it says that no motor vehicle or recreational vehicle shall be parked in any front yard except upon a driveway or adjacent surfaced area. So essentially, um, if you have a next-door neighbor and they're parking their car and the grass and dirt in the front yard, and they have no driveway or no surfacing, that's a violation of the zoning ordinance. And what we have, um, learned from our code enforcement officers is it is one of their most frequently complained about, um, code enforcement activities, but, um, they would like the planning commission to consider, um, making that language a little more specific. Um, there's, there's a broader, um, universe of things out there. We have things like pods, the personal on-demand storage. We have, um, we had a case that Dustin and I had recently that was a semi-trailer, but no cab. We have had, you know, boats, or boats on a trailer. And so, um, code enforcement officers believe if, um, if we could take that language that just says motor vehicle or recreational vehicle and be more expansive, and we gave an example of another city code that we have that talks about trucks, tractors, trailers, motor homes, boats, buses, um, that if we could be broader and that would give them more latitude to, is there, they're kind of hesitant to deal with some of those situations to, for a situation where it's not really a motor vehicle, and it's not, it's not clear what a recreational vehicle all includes. So what we are asking for is whether you'd be willing by motion to authorize staff to bring back a text amendment for your consideration that would further clarify what types of vehicles or trailers must be parked on an all-weather surface in the front yard.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been motioned and seconded. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay, we appreciate that. Um, I don't think we have any other new business for you or unfinished business. We do have, um, an item scheduled for you. Um, it's a public hearing and we're still gathering information on it. But the Salina Christian Academy that occupied the former Lowell School at Highland and Republic has closed, and they have a potential buyer for that property that's interested in perhaps converting it to multifamily housing. So they have, um, applied to change the zoning on that property. And we have, um, placed, sent notice to 40-plus surrounding neighbors and placed two signs on the property. And I can't, I can't speak for Mr. Hers, but that, um, that has, from my experience, has generated about as many calls and questions and inquiries about it as any recent case that we've had. So there will be a public hearing on that and we'll try to provide more detail than that. But, um, there is a request, it's currently zoned R1 single-family, and the request is to rezone it to R3 multifamily, but we're gonna try to get more information than we presently have so we can address, um, questions raised by surrounding property owners and interested members of the public and commissioners, so.
Is that the only item on that docket?
As of now, it is. Um, there's, at, at some point, you have not taken any final action on the proposed replat of Grand Prairie, and that's a possibility of coming back, but, um, we're still trying to get some additional information from the applicant that we can share with the commission. So we will, we will for sure meet, whether it's the public hearing on Lowell and Grand Prairie, we will confirm for you. And if it's not, then, I mean, it, it is on the unfinished business list, but we don't, we're not gonna bring it back till we have all the information we feel we need.
Okay, I recuse myself from the first hearing.
On the Lowell?
On the Lowell, yep.
Okay.
And the calls and inquiries on the Lowell School is in opposition or just-
Mostly, some of it's curiosity, some of it's questions, questions in some cases we can't answer. Questions is, are they gonna build another, if it's rezoned, will they build another building? If it's rezoned, will they tear down the existing building and build something brand new? Are they gonna add on to the existing building? Those are, where are people gonna park? Those are all things that we're, um, gonna try to get gathered up. But I wouldn't say it's, I would say it's more about curiosity and trying to get information and less, less about just outright opposition. Because it is a school, it's been historically been a school, we've had other schools that have been adaptively reused. Um, but when you have a, a large piece of property and a property like that, that's kinda central to a neighborhood, there's a lot of curiosity about what's gonna happen. So we're gonna do our best to answer that question, and that will for sure be on your next agenda, the 18th. That's all, all we have for you this evening.
I move that we adjourn?
Seconded.
It's been motioned and seconded. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Make it official.